You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of Noise Media Network. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney. Sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County and beyond. Monday through Thursday at 10 a.m. Southern Living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, good morning all my Gwinishes out there in Gwinnett, Atlanta. And all of you around the world listening to the sound of my voice. It is a beautiful day here in Gwinnett County. Forty-three degrees going up to a high of fifty-one, so that's pretty darn nice. I was, I've been out the house already early this morning. I was on the go, you hear what I'm saying? I was on the go. Hope you had a wonderful, wonderful weekend. I did, I had a really nice weekend. Busy. It's so funny, so you know I bought the um, high-performance planner that I use every day. And I writing that planner every day, like what my, what I have to, my top three goals for the day. Then I have to go back at night and I had to write my top three goals for the day. I have to also write down things that, that I want to accomplish, how I want to feel, what I'm gonna feel when I accomplish those things. It's, it's almost like a, it's a planner, but it's also kind of like a journal. So it's like a planner journal, right? And then on, at nighttime, after my day is over, I have to go back and then I have to write down how the day went, what I was proud of, what I did good, what I did bad, who I reached out to, you know, what, what was my energy like? So it's pretty cool, I like it. So, one of the things I've always, I always say I want to do is be able to just watch Hallmark Channel, right? Which I used to do, like I used to just be able to just stop and watch Hallmark Channel on the weekends. Cause that's all I wanted to do, like I didn't want to do business, I just wanted to just chill for a minute, which I did not do. And so I started to write this morning and it was like, what do you want to do? It had your, your month in, at a glance, your month at a glance, so I said, what do you want to do? So my month at a glance was, I really want to get back to where I had at least one day that I have to do nothing but just watch Hallmark Channel and read magazines. Like those are my things, right? Cause I don't do that, I don't get, I don't watch a lot of television. When I do, it's like ten o'clock at night, most nights, when I'm watching something about business and then I'm, then I'm off to sleep. So I want to get to, get back to the point where I can sit down, relax, read a good book, read a good magazine, watch a good love story on Hallmark. That's what I'm trying to get to. I just had to share that with you guys, I don't know why, I was compelled to share it, but I'm, I'm trying to balance. I'm trying to balance so I can stay in good health, cause someone asked me the other day, because I keep getting a cold and I never used to get colds. I, I never hardly ever, I've had two colds in the last month, right? I never used to get colds. And so, they asked me, are you getting enough rest? And I was like, eh, probably not. They're like, that's one of the issues, are you eating properly? I'm eating better, you know, I don't eat a lot of vegetables, so I, I have to fi- figure out how to get my vegetables in. So what I did was, I ordered some um, super green supplements, right? Because I don't, I really don't eat a lot of vegetables. I don't eat a lot of much of anything, y'all. You, you would see me and think that's not the case, but it really is the case. Uh, I think it's a time of the day when I eat, like I eat breakfast, but I'm terrible at night because that's when I'm watching television, like ten o'clock at night. And for some reason, that's when I want to snack. Like I don't really snack during the day, like you can't come into my office and find like a whole bunch of candy wrappers and pick uh, potato chip wrappers. You won't find that, cause it's none here, you might find some nuts. You know, I got like some planters that's been sitting there for like a week on my desk. Uh, but you won't find a whole bunch of junk food, you won't find it, cause I don't, I don't do it. But at nighttime, here's the crazy thing about at nighttime, right? I don't even have junk on my side of the room, my husband has junk on his side, right? And he's asleep, and so I'm up brainstorming, cause now my brain is working, cause I'm watching some kind of educational business something on YouTube. And then I get up, out the bed, walk around to his side of the bed with all the junkies and get me some junk and then get back on my side of the bed. That's my real problem, I know that's my problem. I don't bring junk to the bedroom, he brings junk to the bedroom. He's a junk food junkie, so he likes junk. I don't even buy junk, like I don't go in the store and buy potato chips. I don't buy cookies, ain't that crazy? You would think that I would just be like a toothpick, but I'm not. I don't go in the grocery store and buy no junk. That is nuts, right? I don't buy cookies, I don't buy chips, I don't buy cakes, I don't buy any of that stuff. It's the weirdest thing, I don't, like, there's not a receipt that has junk on it that I bought, cause I don't buy any. My husband, well, hey, he buys junk. And then I walk around on his side of the bed and get me some potato chips or some cookies or something. Then I go back on my side and eat it and then I go to sleep. So, that's my problem. Anyway, I said all that for, for a reason, I don't even know what the reason is, I lost my train of thought. Oh, cause I keep getting a cold. So I had to take better care of myself, so it was something I was making a point there, but anyway. I bought me some supplements, some super green supplements. I tried the super green drink, it's just, I can't find anything to mix with that tastes good, it's horrible. I haven't found one that tastes good yet, so I was like, you know, let me try the supplements. That'll probably work for me, cause I can just pop a pill and keep it rolling. And there was, there was a moral to the story, I don't know what it was. Keep, get some balance in your life, maybe that's what it was, I don't know, I lost my train of thought. Anyway, let's get on with this show. It's National Fettuccine Alfredo Day. Yes, let me tell y'all something, it's so weird, right? I'm not even a big noodle person, but I like, I like fettuccine. However, I don't like everybody's fettuccine. Has to be made a certain way, you, I'm talking about, like, let me tell you, it was, it's a restaurant in Bloomfield, Georgia, on Bloomfield Avenue in New Jersey. It's called Giovanni's. That's the first time I ate fettuccine for the first time in my life. I went to Giovanni's, it was my, my daughter was a baby at the time, I think she might have been like two or three. Me, her dad, her dad took, she and I to Giovanni's, that was my first time eating fettuccine. That was the best fettuccine I had, I've ever eaten and I've never had anything better since that day. Cause it was truly, he was an Italian, hence the name Giovanni, and that was the best fettuccine ever, Alfredo. So I will eat fettuccine Alfredo, I will eat tartellini, I will eat cannelloni, um, lasagna, eh. You know, but it's not like I said, oh, I really want me some fettuccine, it's not like that. Somebody make it out, eat it, I'm weird like that. The only thing I say constantly that I want is crab and omelet. Crab and omelet, that's my regular go-to food. My regular, and I eat beef straggles, you know, in the little box, I like that. I, so I got my regular food that I pretty much eat every week, it's crazy. And every now and again, I eat something different. Alright, it's also National Periodic Table Day. Do they even, do they even still use periodic tables? I, I remember in school, we used to use periodic tables, I don't even know if they use them anymore. If they do, then I'm sure they're digital, they're not paper or drawn up on the board. Maybe they are, I don't know, I, I doubt it. National Send a Card to a Friend Day, that's nice. National sent, send your friend a card, you know they got this little digital thing, you could just send some digital cards. Send you, I think I'm gonna send five friends a card today. I think that's nice, I'm gonna, I gotta find the little digital card thing and send out five friends. Send five friends a card day, today. Alright, so National Send a Friend a Card Day, show some love, send your friend a card. Alright, let's get on with these Horoscopes brought to you by Noted Astral, Michael Thyssen for Monday, February the seventh. We gonna kick it off like we always do and that is with Aries. You won't have to look for the action, yeah, action gonna find you today, Aries. Difficult with your mate may lead to isolation, let your boss know your goals. Alright, listen, 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 listen. You don't, don't cause a problem with your mate. And if your mate is causing a problem with you, iron that junk out, you don't want to be isolated. You know, unless they have COVID, of course, then you might want to be isolated. But if they're not, if they don't have COVID, iron it out, talk it out. Sometimes, you know, you can talk things out. Um, communications is key. Like, people think that they don't, if they don't talk about, this is, not everybody's like this. But a lot of people think if I don't talk about it, it's gonna go away, it's not going to go away. Let me just say that again. If you do not talk about it, it's not going away, it's just gonna get worse and worse and worse and worse. But some people feel like if they don't talk about it, you know, it, it's gonna go away. Some people feel like they gotta think about it for like a week and figure out what to say. I get it, you don't want to say the wrong thing, cause everybody can't think, think quick like that to say the right things. I get that part too. But whatever the case is, don't, don't, don't sleep on it, don't just let it, don't lay there and think, well, if I don't say nothing, it's gonna go away. It's not, it's gonna get worse. And let your boss know your goals, if you have goals to move up in the company and to move about, let your boss know, can't nobody read your mind. Communication, communication, Aries, communication. Taurus, avoid letting fam- family members get involved in your personal life. Keep them out of your business, keep your family out of your business. Avoid being overly opinionated or you will alienate your friends. Try not to use emotional blackmail, it will only make matters worse. Stop trying to blackmail folks, Taurus, they don't want to do it, they don't want to do it. That's another thing, stop trying to force people to do stuff. If they don't want to do it, accept the fact that they don't want to do it. Don't you, it's gonna backfire on you, it's gonna make matters worse, cause now they're gonna, they're gonna resent you. They're gonna resent you because you use emotional blackmail on them, they're gonna totally, I'm telling you, they're gonna resent you. When you force people to do things, they resent you. I remember I was dating this guy and I was, we, we were in our thirties, I was ready to settle down. And we were, we were cool, like we had a lot in common, we had a good time, but he was, he liked, he liked women. And I was like, look, I'm ready to settle down. And he was like, he told me, he straight told me, he's like, Audrey, if you make me settle down, I'ma cheat. He straight up told me and I had to, you know what, I had to respect him for that. And I said, you know what, that's a good thing you told me that, so I'ma move on. Because I would hate to have you cheat on me and it'd end real bad for you. So I'ma go on about my business and I did, and I did, and he, he's still single. He's a little, he's, he's still single. Because he, he liked women and he, he told me, if you make me settle down, I'ma cheat. And I was like, well, you go ahead on, cause I don't want you to cheat on me, cause that's not gonna be good for you. So I'ma let you go on with yourself, go on. And he did, what's funny is, he did get a girlfriend or later. Um, that didn't turn out too well, for probably a bunch of different reasons, I can't even imagine why, but anyway. Gemini, you may be overreacting to a situation at hand. Loans will be attainable and legal matters easily taken care of. You'll be able to break bad habits if you put your mind to it. Listen, you can do anything you want to do if you put your mind to it. What I find right now, world, I'm talking to the world right now, is that there are so many things that you can do in your life. It's just overwhelming. Bad habits you can break, new things you can create, it's just a lot going on in the world right now, but there is a lot of opportunities. But it all starts in the mind first, every bit of it. It all starts in your mind first and you gotta have a strong, clear mind to make anything happen. And a focused mind and, 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 and a mind that has desire and all of that stuff. So you gotta start with your mind first. Cancer, you will be able to make financial gains, yes. Try not to allow others to burden you with additional responsibilities. Real estate investments could be to your advantage, yes. We, I was talking to somebody about real estate and NFTs, oh, yesterday. I gotta tell y'all what happened yesterday after I finished the Horoscopes, but we were talking about, they were asking me about NFT because um, y'all know right now, I'm in the process of launching my NFT and, and the guy said to me, he said, Audrey, explain NFTs to me. He said, I want to get into it, but I don't quite get it. And I was like, right now, it's all about artwork, right? On the front side, like that's what you see on the front side, because that's what people are putting out. You know, launch this NFT, you got this ugly artwork or some kind of special piece of artwork, that's all you see. But on the back end, NFTs are gonna be a in- integral part of, of our daily lives in a few minutes. Like, when I say a few minutes, I'm talking about in the coming, in the coming future. Um, and I was telling him about, you know, people have started to, started to already use NFTs for investments and real estate. They've already start, also already started to use real estates as um, collateral to make deals. So, NFTs is gonna be a way that we do things. Here's the thing, most people are gonna get left out in the beginning because they don't understand it and they don't want to try to understand it. The sad part is, you gonna wish you had understood it in the end, cause it's gonna come, it's gonna stay. And a lot of people gonna get left behind, but we talked about real estate deals and we're gonna have more conversations, cause he has a huge network of some very prominent people. And of course, because I'm learning this stuff, who gets invited to those, to those seats, right? Me. Well, I, you know, and then, and I'm learning for my own, my own reasons, like I'm, you know, I'm doing my own NFT, I'm doing some stuff with Good Morning Gwinnett in the space, in the metaspace and, you know, it's, it's, it's amazing, I'm, and I'm loving this space, so. But, you know, a lot of people just don't take the time to go through the internet and go to Google and go to YouTube and spend nights and nights and nights at a time learning this stuff and I'm just the opposite, like I love it. And the more I learn about NFTs in the metaverse, the more, the more I love it and the more I see how I can incorporate it into my business. And so, once you learn something, know something and do something, you can share with other people, then you become an invaluable resource to folks. This is what it is. Leo, help those incapable of taking care of their personal affairs and older loved one may be having problems. One of your female friends may try to disrupt your day, stand up for your rights. Who is that friend trying to disrupt your day? Look Leo, don't let nobody disrupt your day. Yeah, he- he- help older people out, somebody needs your help. If they're incapable, help them out. But the, the female friend is trying to disrupt your day, tell them to kick rocks, baby, I ain't with it today, tell them. It's okay, alright, it's okay. Virgo, spend time with your lover today, don't let criticism upset you. Hassles will delay your plan, look into someone's personal changes. Hmm, look into some personal changes. Listen, spend some time with your lover. Um, they're maybe, they may be feeling a little neglected, Virgo. So spend some time with her, show her some love, rub them on the head, rub them on the back, pat them on the knee, show them some love today. Spend that quality time, if they've been telling you they need quality time, you better listen. Cause Jody and the cleanup woman is standing right outside the door, just wait for you to mess up. I'm just trying to help somebody out now. Alright, I'm going to a song, I'll be right back after the song to give you more of the Horoscopes brought to you by Noted Astral, Michael Thyssen, stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back, it's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily Horoscope brought to you by Noted Astral, Michael Thyssen. We're gonna pick it up with Libra. However, you must not neglect your family, do not neglect your family. They didn't fully understand what was expected. You must watch your tendency to spend whatever you make. Yeah, watch the money, watch the money. I know, you work hard for your money, you should be able to buy what you want to buy, get it. I've heard that story so many times before. Here's the problem with that. That is true, however, you need to learn how to budget. Because if you spend every dime you get, what happens when there's an emergency? I'm just saying, I'm just saying. What happens when you have an emergency? If you feel like, oh, I work hard for my money, cause I, that's, you see, that's the rationale people give themselves because they really want to just waste money and spend money. So they, they, they ration, they rationalize with, I work hard for this, why not get up every morning? And then when there's an emergency, they're stuck. I'm just saying, be careful, Libra, don't rationalize yourself into a hole. I'm just trying to help somebody out today. Scorpio, don't let relatives stand in the way of your personal plans. You may find yourself changing plans for some form of entertainment. You are best not to confide in anyone right now. Keep your business to yourself, Scorpio, I know you, it's burning a hole in your mouth. But don't confide in anybody right now. Don't tell anybody anything, keep it to yourself. Loose lips sink ships, keep it to yourself. Sargent Sagittarius, try to make amends by planning a nice dinner for two. Opportunities to make financial gains will develop through your connections with other people. Children may be less than honest with you, little liars. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know little kids are lying to me, I didn't do it, you know it was them. Who did it then? It wasn't me, it was them. You know their little feathers, you know they are. In the meantime, opportunities to make financial gains will develop through connections with other people. Yes, the key word, there'd be other people. Opportunities, other people, you gotta connect yourself, Sagittarius. Capricorn, travel will lead you in a new direction. Yes, I don't know where you're going, but it's gonna lead you in some new directions. Take care that arrangements to spend quality time together are made in advance. Your diplomatic nature will help you in a, in straining out unsavory situations. It's not, it's a lot of, it's a lot of make arrangements and spend time together, show your, make some love, spend some time traveling together, this is a love day, what's going on? I feel like Valentine's Day already, speaking of Valentine's Day, it's coming. I was talking to somebody recently and they told me they, um, they don't celebrate Valentine's Day. And I said, I said, you're not gonna buy your wife anything for Valentine's, like, we don't celebrate that. I'm like, oh, okay. I was like, I like Valentine's Day. As a man, a man-made holiday, all of them are, every one of them. There's no such thing as a real holiday, somebody made up all of them, but it's still fun to celebrate them. What holiday? Name a holiday that was just, just came from no, it, they all were man-made, every single one of them. So, and listen, y'all hear me read a, a national day every day, people make up. Today is national, what today is, national something. People make, all of them are made up, they're still fun to celebrate though. Anyway, I think that was an excuse for that person not to buy a gift for Valentine's Day. I just do, that's just me. Aquarius, you may be able to impart knowledge that is innovative to those searching for a new angle. Sun disruptions will cause upset and a change of routine in your home environment. You can't help everyone, Aquarius. I know you want to help everybody, but listen, you can't help everybody, you cannot. And here's the thing, some people need your help, some people want your help, some people don't appreciate your help. You can't help everybody, so stop trying. And don't feel guilty, just know, I've done my best, the best I could, okay? Okay. Last but not least, my fellow fish prices. Oh, snap. Lovers may not be truthful, fish. Ooh wee, oh, 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 listen, listen. You may find it difficult to communicate. Us, me? Eh, ooh, chances are you could get stuck with a colleague's job unexpectedly. Okay, listen. Somebody may be lying to you, your lover, who are you loving on that's lying to you, fish? I don't know who that person is, but watch out, it's your lover, could be lying. And you may find it difficult to communicate, that's really, that's a, that's, well, okay, some of us do. Some of us do, some of us don't. I can tell you right now, I'm a fish. And if I find out and I'm being lied to, it's gonna be, whoop, 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 whoop. I had to, I had to block that part out. You gotta try to read my mind, read between, read between the lines on that one. Anyway, chances are you're gonna get stuck with your colleague's job unexpectedly. I don't know what that means, I don't know if that means job forever or job for today. But just be prepared that you may get stuck. And it said, chances are you're gonna get stuck. I don't know exactly what that means. Alright, that's all the Horoscopes I got for you today, I'll be back again tomorrow to bring you more of the Horoscopes brought to you by Noted Astral, Michael Thyssen. Now let's get on to some news you can use. Now, I gotta tell y'all, every once in a while, I run across a story that is just, I can't make this up. I call it, I can't make this up, right? Cause I can't, so, and I'm laughing, cause I've been laughing at this all morning. And I think, and I'm gonna tell y'all the part that really made me laugh, so. There's a story in AJC, right? It's about somebody who was hiking in Jones County, which is up by Macon. And they saw a body, now I know you thinking, what's wrong with her? She laughing, cause somebody spotted a body. I'm laughing because somebody spotted a body and they called the sheriff and they said, hey, we see a body on the trail, over in the bushes. So the sheriff comes, they see the lady's leg and everything, the sheriff comes, he gets to the scene and he finds Selena. And Selena's all covered up in mud and, and, and debris and stuff. And they pull Serena out and Sabrina, Serene, Selena, what did I say, Serena? Selena is a life-size doll. Yeah, so I, listen, I can't make this up, right? And the first thing went through my mind when I saw Selena, Selena, Selena got on a bustier, some boy shorts and some socks. She looked like she might be like five-seven, she has blonde hair. And I'm thinking, so I can see why they thought it was a woman, cause it looks just like a woman, like a real, she's a doll. And I'm saying to myself, well, how does Selena, what, who has Selena? Who has Selena? I can't make this up, y'all, go to AJC, the story is there, you can see Selena. She's sitting on the back of somebody pickup truck, I guess that's the sheriff pickup truck. And when the people saw her, they showed a, a picture of her leg, so it looks like a lady with some clothes on, it's a doll. So where did Selena come from? But this is the funny part, this, this is the funny part. So, so the, so the sheriff or the deputy or somebody put out, if you know Selena or are you, are responsible for her whereabouts, rest assured, no DNA was collected and you are safe. That's the funny part, cause, okay, so, think about what I'm saying. He said, no DNA was collected from Selena, so you're safe. Because probably if they, they had, but in the future, please make sure to dispose of your items in a responsible way. Have a great weekend. That part tickled me, because I'm, when I first saw Selena, I keep wanting to say, Selena. I'm thinking, okay, well, she come from somewhere. In my mind, she come from some guy's house. And then the, the deputy or the sheriff, whoever, he's like, yeah, no DNA was collected. But in the future, please just make sure to dispose of your items responsibly. Have a great weekend, that thing, that was funny to me. Listen, you want to go see Selena, she's sitting on the back of the pickup truck and, and down by Macon in Jones County, they found on the side of, on the side of a hiking trail. Ooh, some of these stories I can't make up, I want, I would love to know why whoever got rid of Selena. Why did they get rid of Selena? Was she worn out? What, I, yeah, I just, my mind is all in the wrong place right now. When I first saw Selena, I was like, mm, Selena got on her bustier and her boy shorts. Ooh, that was funny. And the deputy didn't make it no better, my DNA, I'm just saying, it's just, I, I can't make the story up, it's in AJC, go AJC.com. Go look it up yourself, you'll see it. Ooh, that's just one of the stories I cannot make up. Alright, let me get on to something serious here, cause that was, that was hilarious, I was sitting up here cracking up by myself. Alright, so listen, there's a new market, I told y'all about this before, the new, the new Black Wall Street that's located in Stonecrest. It's beautiful in there. Um, I went there last, in December, I went there after, was it after Christmas? I think it was after, it might have been the first of January, I went, I went to go visit. It is beautiful in there, um, it opened last fall, I went there, I think in, I think I went in December. Anyway, they have kicked off a week, um, three weeks of events starting Wednesday, um, to celebrate Black History Month. So Black Wall Street is home to nearly one hundred minority-owned small businesses and, and they're doing some great things. The location itself is just beautiful on the inside, it's so, it's so beautiful, it's so elegant, it's so classy. It is beautiful. Um, they put a, you can tell they put a lot of um, thought into the way they wanted it to look. It doesn't look like your regular mall, it looks like a beautiful showroom. And um, when I went, and I'm gonna go back again, they hadn't put all the stores in there just yet. It was only a few stores in there, I went on a Sunday, because I met my client there, um, to talk about her startup, which I gotta tell y'all about that, because the, the first class from her startup graduated yesterday, which is really nice. Um, this, the first cohort from her startup graduated la- yesterday. So we did the graduation ceremony and everything, so I'm gonna put the pictures on the website shortly, but um, I met my client there, we got a chance to look around, it is beautiful. Um, the marketplace is located at eighty-one oh-nine Mall Parkway. And it is, um, it was brought to life by um, LaSesta Bill Allen, he is a philanthropist in the area. He is a developer, um, he's a businessman, he's been, you know, he's been in business for a long time. He also launched the Startup Factory, which is also located in Stonecrest, um, by Stonecrest Mall. It used to be the old Barnacles in Stonecrest Mall, that's another beautiful spot. It's a coworking location where you can go there, you want to, you need a coworking space at Stonecrest. It's right by the malls, like, so you gotta turn up in like you're going to the mall. But where Barnacles used to be, they bought the building and they turned it into a coworking space. Now they down the street a little bit further, on the left-hand side, if you're coming from Snellville, they have the new Black Wall Street, which is beautiful, it's beautiful, it's just, you gotta go check it out. So go check it out, support the businesses, they have a whole lot of festivities going on for the rest of the month of February. Again, the new Black Wall Street is located at eighty-one oh-nine Mall Parkway in Nessus, Stonecrest, Georgia. It's right, it's right down the street from Stonecrest Mall. Um, if you want more information, go to newblackwallstreetmarket.com, newblackwallstreetmarket.com. Uh, and you'll see all the details about the activities that's going on, um, to support the business owners. I think it's a great, great, um, great opportunity for you to show some love. And also, it's a great opportunity for you to see if you are a small business owner, how you can become a part of the- Um, great opportunity for you to show some love, and also it's a great opportunity for you to see if you are a small business owner, how you can become a part of the. Of that community, cuz that is a community, and it is, it is a beautiful community, but, and but check this out, so I said I was gonna go in there, talk to them about it, but I haven't. Cuz I just don't have the time, but they got a whole podcast studio, I'm like, wait a minute, who's running the podcast studio? You know, and I thought about it, and I still may do it, I was like, who's running the podcast studio, like, I should, I should be running the podcast studio. Uh, which would be kinda cool because all the businesses are right there, so, I don't know who's running the podcast studio yet, but. I might throw my, I might throw my hat in the ring. Oh, okay, let's get on to some real news, that was real news too, this is news that's concerning Gwinnett County right now. So Cobb and Gwinnett County leaders blast new state drawing maps. They, they're fighting over these maps, we talked about this yesterday on Popcorn and Politics, because we don't know. We don't know, I know right now, um, people have to start qualifying in March, but if they don't know exactly how the lines are drawn, how do you qualify? Because you don't know where, what you're running for. Cuz the line, they, they're still fighting over the map, so anyway. Officials in two democratically controlled metro Atlanta counties expressed outrage Thursday at Republican maneuvers to redraw local political district maps. To favor conservative candidates. That, that sucks, oh my god, stop it. I, I, there's, I ain't gonna even get into it cuz, um, okay. A partisan vote in the State House passed a map for Gwinnett County that shifts lines. To where Republicans, where Republican will likely rejoin the county's Board of Commissioners. Cobb County Republicans are gearing up for a similar vote. To to air the liberal incumbents. Right, the Thursday vote. The Thursday vote on the Gwinnett map bypassed the General Assembly, um, normal de- redistricting process. Which is traditionally led by local legislative delegation and rubber stamped by the full legislature. The Gwinnett map is being fast-tracked to the state for consideration, and Cobb's map is likely heading in the same trajectory. So they just do what they wanna do, they bypass everything, they just do what they wanna, it's so crazy cuz I just feel like. Why do we have rules in place if the Republican Party is gonna just disregard all of them and do what they wanna do? Like, they're just gonna disregard all the rules and regulations, all the way things have been done, we're gonna do it our way. And it's like, nobody can do anything, it's like, there are no rules when it comes in, it's, it's nuts, y'all, it's nuts. But anyway, um, the fight is not over yet, says Sam Park, aiding legal action is on the table for, for the redistricting map. Um, that makes it to the, that makes it to the governor's desk. So they're gonna fight, it's gonna be lawsuits, matter of fact, um, check me, check out today, go to. Go to Popcorn and Politics on Facebook, or check me out later on this evening, yesterday we did Popcorn and Politics. And we were supposed to have, um, Solicitor General, Gwinnett County Solicitor General. Brian White signed on the show, but he was having some technical problems. And so he's gonna be on the, we're gonna do a special episode of Popcorn and Politics this evening at six P M. So if you are around, be sure to go to Facebook and find Popcorn and Politics. And and subscribe to the page, so you, you'll get the alert when the show goes live. Uh, if you're not there, follow me on LinkedIn, and when it goes live on LinkedIn, you'll get the, um. You will get that, uh, 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 that alert as well, but Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, um. And, um, Roku, so if you don't, if you have a Roku, you wanna watch it at six P M on your television. Um, add Noise Media Network to your Roku device, Noise Media Network to your Roku device. And you'll be able to see Popcorn and Politics live at 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 six P M, alright? So these maps, these, oh, man, it's so crazy because it says, the redrawn of these map is an attack on people of color. And then that's, 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 that's a sad part, you know, but you know what always gets me? What always gets me is that, how can you be a good person? And know that you're doing just bad stuff, how do you consider yourself a good person, when you knowing that the things that you do are bad? I, I don't, I don't, I don't quite get that part, you know, I just really, I really. Like, you're, you're supposed to be a good, you, you think you're a good, you think you're a good person, but you do things that are just right down awful. You know, and so, right now, there's a fight, and it's a, that's a very long article, y'all, I mean, it says, prepare for a fight. It says, the richest map, then this is Bunny Rich, who, who is like, you know, she's off with a map being redrawn. It said, the richest map become the new landscape for local Gwinnett polit- politics, it is drastic, it drastically. It'll drastically affect the reelection chances for Commissioner Mar- uh, Marley Foskew, the first black candidate ever elected to the county board. So if they redraw their maps, it's probably gonna affect Marley's, um, fight for that seat again. District four, which she represents, which she represents was shared from being a competitive district. And only one, um, to on, to only to one likely be filled by a Republican candidate, her term is end of this year. So she has to fight for that seat. Um, yes, it's sad, but they don't care, they don't care about nothing, what they care about. I can just go on and on about that, but I won't, cuz I wanna go into some other stuff, oh god, and this story is no better. Sons of Confederate Veterans Group sued Gwinnett over monument removal, huh, I tell you. You know what's crazy about this, right? So, there, there, there is pe- there are people out there, they feel like their history is more important than other people's history. And it's gonna go into the next story I'm gonna tell you after I go to a song. So the Georgia Division of Sons of Confederate Veterans and the organization's Camp Number Ninety-Six based in Lawrenceville on Thursday sued Gwinnett County. And each county commissioner almost exactly one year after the Confederate monument in Lawrenceville Square was taken down. Now, the, the suit filed in Gwinnett County Superior Court alleges that the statue removal was illegal. Citing a state law that prohibits the removal, removal or relocation of Confederate monuments except for their preservation, protection and inter-. And and, uh, interpretation. Right? Uh, we simply ask that the law be followed. Yeah, but let me just say that again, we simply ask that the law be followed. There's a pause there, right? Woo, and we believe that the government officials don't, don't get to violate the law. I'm just gonna stop right there. Confederate law followed. That's all I'm gonna say right there, and I'm leaving it right there, you wanna read that full story, go to AJC dot com, I'm leaving it right there. Confederate law and follow. I'm just gonna put all that in the sentence together, y'all, y'all can go read the story on AJC, I'm going to a song, I'm going to a song, I'll be right back after this song. To give you more of what's going on in and around Gwinnett County and beyond, so stay tuned.
You're the only one I think about, yeah. The only one I care about, yeah, about, yeah. Thinking about you day and night, yeah. I just wanna get it right, yeah, right, yeah. Ooh, yeah, yeah, you're the one I'm thinking of, come on and take my love, let's go and we can fly away. We're taking off to the sky, it's you and me tonight, whoa, baby. You know that was something special, baby boy, you are my treasure. I know we got it, I know we got it, baby, got it, baby, yeah, yeah. I knew that it was something special, baby boy, you are my treasure. I know we got it, I know we got it, baby, got it, baby, yeah, 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 yeah. I know we got it, I know we got it, I know we got it, baby, got it, baby, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's amazing, oh, you rock my world. You're the only one for me. Never thought that I would be your girl. Ooh, yeah, yeah, you're the one I'm thinking of, come on and take my love, let's go and we can fly away. We're taking off to the sky, it's you and me tonight, whoa, baby. You know that was something special, baby boy, you are my treasure. I know we got it, I know we got it, baby, got it, baby, yeah, yeah. I knew that it was something special, baby boy, you are my treasure. I know we got it, I know we got it, baby, got it, baby, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know we got it, I know we got it, I know we got it, baby, got it, baby, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Welcome back, welcome back, listen guys, let me tell y'all something, I'm buying so much popcorn. So, we do a show called Popcorn and Politics, right? And I ran out of popcorn, so, but just this week alone, I've been hit with, with three popcorn campaigns, and I'm like, oh my god, so I will have popcorn probably. Not next week, cuz it takes a minute for the popcorn to come, but. Um, I think this, and the reason I bring this story up, because I think y'all need to look for some other donation, um, some other fundraising platform, I'm buying popcorn out right now. I know you gotta raise funds for you, for whatever you're trying to do, but I think you need to do some, some, um, some new fundraisers, I'm, I'm tired of buying popcorn, for real. Do some cookies or something, no, don't do cookies, don't do cookies, don't do cookies, do apples, I, there's an apple fundraiser out there, I think, don't do apples either, cuz I don't eat apples that much. I don't know, do, find something, find something, I don't know, something, I'm just tired of buying popcorn. I gotta, my brother just sent me a link, like, hey, I need your support, I'm like, yeah, and I, I have to support him cuz he always support me. But I just bought popcorn, and I got two other campaigns to buy popcorn for, so more popcorn coming. Um, oh god, so more politics, y'all, I know, I'm just, it's, it's a po- it's a political day, I guess, anyway. GOP lawmakers targets Gwinnett School Board Chair overviews on racism. So apparently, um, Teresa Johnson, who sits in the seat as this Gwinnett County School Board Chair. Is getting some flack from the GOP because she is, um, she's an activist, and she, she speaks out, and she speaks about Black Lives Matter. Uh, and so, you know, whenever people start talking about race, they, there's a problem. And the problem is, the, the real problem is, we don't talk about it enough, right? And we don't talk about it, what people can understand, and we don't want our kids to learn about, not our kids, cuz our kids know. But then they, they can look at the news and see how people feel about us, which is sad. Which is sad. Anyway, Senator Burke Jones, who's running for Lieutenant Governor in recent letter, called on the Georgia Board of Education to investigate whether or not. Teresa Johnson's statement implicated policies and administrative actions violate code of conduct policies on a county or statewide level. Um, so he, that's a problem. That's because right now they're trying to figure out what to do, you know, with the county, with, with the education, they wanna, they wanna make it nonpartisan. Uh, it's, it's just a lot, and I think, I think I talked about this last week, that's like, let's take politics out of schools. Let's take that out, let's, eh, see, here's the thing. Because you wanna bury history, right, Republicans, because that's what they wanna do. You wanna bury certain histories, but you want, we want other histories to stand out in the broad daylight. But other histories you wanna, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna bury. Um, when we start talking about our history, cuz it's so horrible, because you made it horrible, people, the people that made it horrible. They made it horrible, we didn't make it horrible, they made it a horrible history. And so because we wanna talk about it, it becomes inflammatory and divisive. But the things that they do, they, there's ne- it's always good. It's always good. But if we wanna wake somebody in their community and show them just how horrible some of the things that were done, and they can see it, then it becomes divisive. Yeah, anyway, um. Now she's facing a lot of flak from the GOP, she's even facing death threats. Like, we talked about this yesterday on, um. On the show, she's facing death threat to the point where she has to get security. A board of, a school board official, this is how crazy this is going. It says, since joining the school board last year, Johnson has faced, um, virtual and meetings and online. In October, she said she contacted law enforcement about disturbing comments, but was told nothing could be done since there were no explicit death stre- death threats. She said she, she, um, she said then, she, she said she then purchased a home security system and a gun. This is how bad it is. The woman is on the school board. And she has to purchase a gun to protect herself. Penny Poole, President of Gwinnett County N double A C P, said calling for an investigation of Johnson was an attempt to dim- diminish her power as an elected official. The harassment needs to stop, she said. Yeah, you wanna have her investigated. But, but the rest of the crap y'all doing is okay. Someone said to me yesterday, and, and this was funny. They said to me, I said to them, I started doing the podcast because I thought about getting into politics first. And, um, after going to a few meetings amongst my own party, I realized I wasn't cut out, wasn't cut out for it yet. Like, I still had more to learn, I said, because I'm at the point, right now. Some of these people probably get popped in the face, and they was, he was like, that's what we need, we need somebody like that, I'm like, nah, you don't need that, I'm gonna be embarrassed in my family, cuz. I already know that some of the stuff they do is just ridiculous, and I, I'm not, I don't have, not yet. I'm not saying I'll never run for something, I'm just saying, I don't, I'm closer, I'm closer than I was four years ago. Good one in Gwinnett is four years old. So I'm closer than I was four years ago, um, about getting into politics, but back then, my, I just, I don't think I could take the nonsense. Especially if you stared in my face. So that might be, that might have been a problem, I'm better, I'm getting better with age and time. Anyway, it's just a lot going on, Jones, who, Burke Jones, who, who, who's found this, this investigation. He also raised concerns about Gwinnett School District that lists critical race theory as a concept that may be used in research. Everybody hates that. Everybody hates critical race theory because it tells the truth about our history. Listen, deal with it, there's a picture that was on LinkedIn, it said, showed a little girl been walked out by three grown men, little black girl. And I'm sure this was like back in the nineteen forties or fifties or something. Little black girl been walked out of school by three grown white men. Just cuz she, she, cuz she couldn't go to the school, little girl, it's like she about five years old, six, maybe six. And they was like, if this little girl was strong enough to live through it, your kids is strong enough to know about it. That was the caption. If she was strong enough to live through the whole process, your kids are strong enough to know about it. I thought that was, I thought that was powerful, but it was truthful. But they don't want their kids to know how horrible the history was, let them know, let them get their own opinions about the history. Lot of them grow up in a house right now, and they listen to all the nonsense that their parents spew, cuz there's some, there's some racial families out there. Racist families. And their parents put all this crap in their heads about who certain races of people are. And they, they're the ones that are the monsters, like, they're the ones who do all the crap. Yet, when they tell the stories, it's everybody else but them, that's normally how that goes. I'm just saying. Ah, okay, I'm going to a song, those stories are so heavy today, I just feel like I gotta keep playing music cuz the stories are so heavy. Going to another song, be back after the song to give you more of the rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County, stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back, it's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney, giving you a daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. Um, North Cross is seeking additional, uh, four point. Um, Norcross is seeking additional uh four point four million for a green, for the Greenway pro- project. Yeah, four point four million they're seeking, Norcross recently passed a resolution to request an additional four point, so this is an angel number, y'all. So, four million, four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in funding, that's a funny number. And so if my daughter was on the show right now, she'll tell y'all what four, four, four means, it's a meaning to, I don't know what it is, but I'm looking at the number like four, 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 four. Anyway, um and funding for the Atlanta Regional Commission, from the Atlanta Regional Commission to support the Norcross Greenway Project. The resolution is required as a part of the two thousand twenty-two application for the Transportation Improvement Program to allocate supplemental federal funds. For the youth and construction of the highest priority projects um in the regional transit plan, so. They wanna do the Greenway Project and they need more money, they need more money to get it done. Um, so let's see, let's see, um a change in the mental road alignment to avoid impact and moral. Um, was also, or or has also increased the right of way costs, so it's gonna be, they they probably gonna get it, though. Listen, Gwinnett is Gwinnett strong, and normally they get what they need to make things happen, so that's gonna, it's probably gonna take place. Swanee approves the plan for a hundred and seventy-four new home neighborhood at Settles Bridge Road. Listen, Gwinnett is getting crowded, yes, it's it's construction everywhere, now what's crazy is, um. Over on Chandler Chandler Road, I think it is, in Lawrenceville, it's it's kinda sits between Lawrenceville and Grayson, which is kinda weird, Lawrenceville, Grayson, and Dacul, I think. But anyway, they have a new subdivision that they're building right there called Canterbury, and they kinda just stopped building it. So I don't know what the holdup is, I I need to go to, I need to go to Nextdoor, cause you, let me tell y'all something, when I wanna know what's going on in Gwinnett County, I go to Nextdoor dot com, right? And I type in, hey, what's going on with whatever, somebody on Nextdoor know knows what's going on in the neighborhood. And so Canterbury, they they put up look like the pool house or the bathrooms where the pool is gonna be, but no, no construction has started. But anyway, I said all that to say, Gwinnett County is getting crowded. So Swanee City Council recently approved the zoning change that will allow for the development of a hundred and seventy-four single-family homes. On about one hundred and twenty-one acres at the end of Settles Bridge Road. Access will be from a single public road just northwest of the intersection of Moore Road. The revised zoning will also allow approximately one point, ooh. One point four three homes per acre, what does that mean? What do you mean, one point four three homes, anyway, is is it saying that they're gonna have like an acre each, cause that'd be nice? Or half acre, I don't know what that means, anyway, the development include three tennis courts, yeah? A twenty-five yard swimming pool, a clubhouse with sixty-five space parking lot. That's gonna be a big, that's gonna be a big, that's gonna be huge, sixty-five space parking lot? That's gonna be nice, though, that sounds like sixty-five space parking lot at the clubhouse. Approval for the plan came with several conditions, one requires residential lots adjacent. Two are within a hundred feet of the river, um River Club on Swanee or Swanee Farms subdivision adjacent to Meadowbrook Circle. Must comply with minimal lot size, now what is that? A lot with um requirements for original zoning district for a hundred and forty homes per acre. A hundred and forty homes per acre, that sounds like a lot, anyway, um that's gonna be happening, so I know. I'm sure some people in Swanee are not happy about that, while others are probably happy because they wanna move to Swanee, now. The price of them houses, that's the question, Swanee is beautiful. So, I don't know, I've seen some houses over here in Lawrenceville, a seven hundred thousand that's being built, yeah, seven hundred thousand. Seven hundred, so I don't know how much them houses gonna be, yeah. That's, it says Swanee, so Swanee is, I mean, all of Gwinnett is beautiful, really, but Swanee is beautiful, like, really beautiful, too, and so. Um, and it's more northern of here, so I'm just trying to figure out, well, how much are the houses gonna cost? Because I've seen some of them houses and, you know, though, and then, you know what's crazy, though? The real estate market just jumped up like ridiculously in the last two years. And I, and so my brother said to me, cause he finally, he has finally been able to get his house, they're building it right now. He's been trying, he thought he wasn't gonna get one, he's like, I'm just not gonna get a house, this is crazy, and he's finally able to finally get it, so his house is being built right now, but anyway. Um, when he first came down here and saw a house, it'd be like, it was three hundred and some thousand dollars, it was, it was on land and everything. And he slept on it, and I kept saying, you better get the house, you better get the house, and he never got it, and then when he decided to move back, the housing market went berserk. And then he couldn't get a house, which was nuts, and so he was scuffling, 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 cause every time he would go to get a house, somebody would outbid him, he kept saying, I thought people didn't have money. I said, somebody got some money, they keep outbidding you, and the houses weren't cheap, that's the crazy part, like, they're not cheap. And so, but people outbid him, he's like, that's nuts, I'm not going a hundred thousand dollars over the asking price, and that's what people were doing, I think it's starting to cool off right now, though. Because he was able to get his house for, you know, it it's, it probably costs a hundred and twenty thousand more than it should have. Um, but given the market they were in, I think he's okay. Alright, the kid consignment is back, the the semi-annual kid kid consignment sale is back at the fairgrounds, yep. So it started this week, uh from nine to seven AM, the day it starts, and so, um you can go there and get uh cells, um. The cell features quality, gently used infant, kids, teen and maternity clothing. Shoes, accessory, games, puzzles, and toys, bikes, baby equipment, and more. For more than one thousand families, for more than one thousand families who are sellers at the event, a thousand families, so anything you probably need to buy. You can go find that kid's assignment, so that's at the fairgrounds located in Lawrenceville, so right now, this is gonna run from today all the way through Saturday. And you can go there any day between um nine AM and six PM, I think it closes at six PM on Saturday. So check it out, if you wanna go there and get some, some, if you know, you know somebody that needs some stuff, some kid stuff. Or you want to buy some kid stuff for yourself, there's a lot, stuff for more than a thousand families, that is a lot of stuff, y'all, a lot of stuff. Yep, they say we're trying hard to continue this event despite the challenges caused by COVID. Um, so this is our fourth event since COVID, we have extended our number of event days, offered additional discount days, and modified our cell floor. To be able to allow for shoppers a more easily socially distanced experience, so that's what they're trying to do, so. Kid's assignments, if you wanna check it out, it's gonna be at the fairground, located in Lawrenceville, on Sugarloaf Parkway. Um, at the Gwinnett County Fairgrounds, and and hours start today, they open already, they're gonna close at seven o'clock this evening. And that's gonna be that way for the rest of this week, from nine, from nine AM to seven, except for Friday and Saturdays is nine to six. So if you wanna go out and buy some used, some gently used stuff, you can do that at the fairgrounds, alright? Alright, I'm going to my last song, then I'm gonna come back and give you my word of inspiration for the day, so stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back, so listen, guys, that's all I got for you today, but before I go, I wanna give you my word of inspiration, and here it goes, it says. You've done it before, and you can do it now, see the positive possibilities. Redirect the the substantial energy of your frustration and turn it into positive, effective, unstoppable determination. Let let me say that again, you've done it before, and you can do it now. See the positive possibilities, redirect the substantial energy of your frustration and turn it into positive, effective, unstoppable determination. Ref Marston said that, and he was right, sometimes we have to go back and look at the things that we've, we've accomplished, and to believe that whatever we're trying to do right now, we can do it again. You can do it again, I I lean on, I lean on my dog company all the time, because I remember a time. When I was launching that company, and I remember the dedication and the determination that I put forth in the company. I remember the time that I put into the company, I remember the sacrifices I made, I remember, I remember the um. I remember the things I gave up, I remember all of that, I remember all of those things, and so. You know, I know I did it before, I can do it again, and I lean on that a lot, because there are times when I just wanna fall on my face, like, you know what, I'm done with this. I am done with this, I don't wanna do it anymore, and then I remember, you did it before, you can do it again, and you can, so just remember that, remember the positive things that you've done. You know, right now, it may seem that it's impossible, it's not, anything is possible, as long as you can focus on it and believe in it, and believe in yourself. That's the other thing, you have to believe in yourself, you have to stop doubting yourself, I've lived with, I I used to doubt myself a lot, right? Not because I was comparing myself to others, I just kept feeling that things weren't good enough, so I would make them bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. And I spent no time on nurturing that thing, I thought I was, I thought I was nurturing the thing, right? But in reality, I was building it bigger and bigger and bigger, because I felt that was never good enough, till I was like, you know what, it is what it is right now. And now I'm just having a good time living life, doing the thing that I love, which is doing my podcast, sharing information that I've learned with other people. Um, hits, that's why I did the first, the uh Her Startup Academy, so that was a, I did Her Startup Academy, and the first. Uh graduating class graduated yesterday, which I'm so proud of that, um, a nonprofit called um, By Faith Global Ministries. Um, tapped me to facilitate the training that I put together, and I co-co facilitated that program with um Michelle Thomas out of Riverdale. And so we did that, it was a virtual academy for four weeks, the women got on there for four weeks, they shared their business ideas, their goals, their visions, and we helped them. Figure out some things about their businesses that they needed to do, so I'm so excited to graduate the first class of her, her startup academy um yesterday. And so, um, so that's what I do, I share my, I share what I've learned, I do my podcast, cause that's what I love. And I keep it moving, and that's what you gotta do, remember, you did it before, you can do it again. So all I got for you today, could've been anywhere in the world, but you spent the last hour and four minutes with me, and I love and appreciate you for that. Um, if you missed any episode of this show, go to GoodMorningGwinnett dot com to listen to past episodes there. Also, go there and buy your horoscopes, your zodiac shirt, check out this, listen, I know I do the horoscopes every morning, check out the zodiac shirts, they are really, really nice. I designed them myself, and they are nice, so check them out, get yours, and when you get it, take a picture and send it to me, I'm gonna put it on the website. Um, follow me on Facebook at Good Morning Gwinnett, follow me on Instagram at Good Morning Gwinnett. And be sure to follow me on the Twitter at GM Gwinnett, the number one. And also, if you listen to this show on Apple Podcasts, find your favorite two episodes and give it five stars and subscribe to the show. I'm gonna be writing new articles moving forward on Good Morning Gwinnett under business, I'm talking about growing your business in the, in the three point, uh three point O era. Cause that's where we're going, we're going into three point O, and the reason I know this is because right now I'm in the process of launching this NFT. And everything is about three point O, I don't want you to be left behind, I won't be left behind, so I'll be writing articles on a weekly basis, talking about your business in the three point O. Alright, so be sure to check the website out for, for the articles and follow what I'm doing, and see how it can help you grow your business as well. I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM, listen, if God, if it's God will, I'll be back, stay safe out there, my friends, stay safe out there, and I appreciate you. Appreciate you for listening to this show and sharing this show with your family and friends, until next time, until next time, make it a great day, y'all, bye now.
You've been listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, make sure to tune in Monday through Thursday at ten AM Eastern Time to find out what's happening around Gwinnett. If you liked this episode, subscribe now and share with your friends, to learn more about Noise Media Network, visit noise media dot U S.